Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I like to call the meeting to order. First time, I think, we've called it to order when there's still light outside, so spring is on the way. This is a good thing, right? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Gelderlos. Maryka.
Here.
Norca.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truist.
Here.
Vanderwaal.
Here.
And Mayor Mas.
Here. Councilman Gelderlos is out of town and was asked to be excused tonight. Is there a motion to excuse him?
So support.
Motion support. Any discussion? All those in favor of excusing him, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Tonight for the invocation, we have Pastor Patrick Hookstat from Rock Urban Church. Are you here this evening, Pastor? Not sure we've met. Okay, well, in lieu of that, then, Councilmember Steenstra will be giving the invocation tonight. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation. We're going to call that with the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we thank you for this beautiful day, and we thank you for the seasons here in Michigan and the change as we enter into spring. We thank you, too, for this time and place, this meeting of the Granville City Council. We thank you for the leadership here. We thank you for the staff, the directors, the organization of the city, the services provided. And we thank you for all these people who've come out here tonight. And we just pray your blessing on this meeting as we gather together in the best interest of the city of Granville. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tim. Appreciate that very much. We have the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve that agenda? Still support? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. We also have the minutes from our last meeting, February 24, and I was not here. JR was in charge of the meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from February 24? Regulate me.
So.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any additions, corrections, anything anybody wants to emphasize? Probably not. If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes from February 24, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Right. Time for the bills. Well, it's still only a six-digit number, but kind of half of us are down this week. So, Griffin?
Yeah, another full packet of bills for all of your considerations. A lot of stuff going on in the city. Got a few that I will highlight for you. And as normal, if you have questions about any of them or any others, I am happy to do the best I can to answer those. Going to start off with an invoice in the amount of $9,200 to DeBries Landscape Management. This is in regard to lighting that is installed in the downtown by the DVA. We have an invoice in the amount of $17,410 from Dubois Cooper Associates. This is a variety of miscellaneous parts and supplies used at the Clean Water Plant, many of which I'd be happy to pull up the invoice and we can go through, but I don't fully know if I could pronounce all of them. But some of the more scientific-type equipment we use at the Clean Water Plant and their laboratory. We have a large invoice in the amount of $466,294.20 from Franklin Howard Company. This is actually the combination of two progress payments, one in regard to the raw sewage pump project and the other one in regard to the airation blower project, both taking place in the Clean Water Plant. An invoice in the amount of $123,906.15. This is a progress payment for the work that was conducted on 36th Street, and this is also the same vendor who will be starting on 31st and Wallace come the spring. So that was all bid under one contract, and we're paying installments on that, helped us get a better deal and secure a vendor to do all three of those repaving and water main replacement projects. We have, after those large ones, a very small invoice in the amount of $50. But I want to highlight this. This was paid to Pine Rest. This is the city's employee assistance program. That was the $50 that was paid for a high-performing teams training that was hosted at the leadership retreat for the management team on January 3rd, so back a couple months ago. We have two more, one for $3,720 to Superior Asphalt. This is for the asphalt code patch, the routine maintenance that is done throughout the city. Want to highlight, I know we've been getting quite a few questions and comments about the condition of a segment of 44th Street, a particularly bad stretch that's kind of in front of the Buck Town Center, the McDonald's over there. So we are working to get code patch on that. That segment of road is on our road improvement plan. It's actually going to be part of this upcoming fiscal year's road slate, but to set realistic expectations for everyone, likely that project will be taking place spring of 2026. So I know that's still a little bit away for those who have to drive that road every day, but hopefully at least the silver lining is on all of our radar, and that is a project that is anticipated to get completed here in the next year or so. The last one I want to point out is an invoice in the amount of $4,000 to the United States' Geological Survey. This is a quarterly payment we make for them running a stream gauge off the M11 Bridge. It's used for a variety of things, but one that's very important is for flood monitoring. So again, a number of other invoices in the packet. As you mentioned, another pretty healthy amount, a lot going on in the city. I'm happy to do what I can to answer any questions.
Any questions for Griffin about any of the invoices he does tonight? If not, is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $950,920.59?
So.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Comments, questions? If not, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Maryka.
Yes.
Norca.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Next, we have a presentation by the Environmental Sustainability Committee. Their 2024 Annual Report. It's always very interesting looking forward to hearing what you've got to say. Welcome.
Thanks for having me. I'm Jason Flanagan. I'm the chair of the Granville ESC, and excited to tell you about our remarkable year and share some of our exciting plans for 2025. And we'll end with a couple of requests from our group of the city. I think this is the first year we've been in front of you where our team has stayed consistent. We're a small but mighty team and excited to keep our progress moving. I think your team has seen this slide a number of times. We include this every time we're in front of you, but this is kind of our mission to represent the city. You know, we advise the city and council on best practices and sustainability issues. We look for opportunities to collaborate with other groups in West Michigan, not just within Granville here. We lead our own initiatives. We share resources and education with the community, and then we come before you once a year to report on progress. I'm not going to drain this slide, but here's a quick view at all of our amazing accomplishments this year, and we'll walk through these in more detail. First off, I'm happy to report that we have maintained our Silver Status with Michigan Green Communities for 2024. The official announcement will come from the MML in June. We continued our recycling events this year. We target two a year, one for Earth Day and one shortly after the holidays. In particular, the thing that we focus on is the EPS foam. It's a hard-to-recycle item, and we have a great resource here in Granville at Harbor Foam. Our participation continues to grow year over year. We're seeing more vehicles and more foam. We offer cardboard just as an easy recycle item, but something that a lot of people have a need for, but really our key item here is the foam. So it's great to see that that use grows and grows. In late 2023, you authorized us to enroll the city in the NWF's Community Wildlife Habitat Program. We have branded our effort to certify the city, "Growing a Greener Granville." So in 2024, in order to help move some programs along, we created a subcommittee of the team that can meet more frequently and does include members outside of our core appointed team, including Lizzie, who also represents Friends of Buck Creek. So it's great to see the teams working together. A first of many, hopefully, event for us in 2024 was our speaker series. So we hosted these at the library. We had four in the spring with, you know, the header of gardening for wildlife to support our community, the launch of our community habitat project. And then we had one in the fall about our Clean Water Plant here. That spring speaker series culminated in our first-ever native plant sale and expo right here at the Farmers' Building. We had over 10 organizations and vendors participate. More than 200 people came. We had people come from all over, including as far as Holland. Another first for us this year was our Buck Creek EcoQuest. You had received some information in your packet a number of weeks or months ago about this event, but we wanted to highlight it here. We had more than 100 people attend. We partnered with multiple organizations to put on the event, and we offered hands-on activities for adults and children. An exciting piece of this, as we've heard from our partners, is looking to, you know, step up their involvement in the coming year. So we're really looking forward to 2025's event. We continued our stewardship projects, volunteer efforts across the city, pictured here as an event we did in December to remove invasive woody plants, which I quickly learned really means trees. Next time, I'll bring a better saw. So it was 2024. Looking ahead to '25, we set this goal back in 2021 for our involvement in the Michigan Green Communities effort. We set out to achieve bronze in 2022, which we did. We set out to achieve silver in 2024, which we did. And now we're looking ahead at 2027 with our eyes on gold. One of the things that we've realized quickly, now that we're pushing towards that next level, is there's only so far we can drive this as a community board. We do think that gold may be difficult. We're going to continue to strive for it, but we may need additional resources or engagement from the city in order to truly accomplish that goal. Here's a breakdown of how we are performing within the categories in the program. We made tremendous strides in the Inspire category through a lot of our events that I just covered, community engagement events I just covered, but I want to draw your attention to the bar chart on the right. The difference between silver and gold isn't quite double the effort, but it's close. So that's where we may plateau without further engagement. We are, as a community, punching a bit above our weight class with our peers, and I can't say for a fact, but between the conferences we've been to and the webinars and Zoom meetings we've participated in, we haven't identified another group that is represented by volunteers and not by staff or even dedicated sustainability staff. The Growing a Greener Granville Initiative, which is the Community Wildlife Habitat Program, can also be measured through metrics. The first four listed here are community-level engagement items that we drive. We are on track by the end of 2025 to meet or exceed these top four categories, leaving the individual habitat certifications are bridged across. You know, when we set up this program, we knew this would be a multi-year effort, but we're making great strides in all the community-wide goals. So in order to continue to drive engagement with the community and seek new certifications, we have a bunch of events planned for the year. So, you know, first up on the list is the Mayor's Monarch Pledge Program, which we will come back to shortly. We'd like to enroll the city in that program. We have another speaker series coming. We have three events planned at the library. We are planning an educational event. This is not a plant poll. This is walk, talk, and learn from experts at Mill Race Park. We are planning Earth Day activities. We will start the day with our annual recycling event at Harbor Foam, and we will transition into an Earth Day Fair at Littlefoot Coffee Roasters. We're going to have our second native plant sale and expo on May 31st, and we are planning another EcoQuest in September. The other items on our list for 2025, right now, we have an active community survey posted through a Google form. The QR code will take you there, or the link. We're seeking feedback from our community and others around, what's important, where are information gaps, things like that, to help drive our work. We will continue to use the social media website and particularly the city newsletter to drive further information and resources. That was really a focus of our team this year, was to take advantage of all the newsletter that we could, so we appreciate that opportunity. And then, you know, we will, of course, continue building relationships with other organizations, and we want to serve as a resource to not only this team, but other groups and boards in Granville, and we could use your support. I'm going to transition into, we have three asks for you tonight, starting with the Mayor's Monarch Pledge. This is a National Wildlife Federation program. It will draw attention to our certification effort. In order to accomplish this program, you need to perform three actions from a list of many. We've listed four here. Three of them, we are already planning to accomplish. We would like to add the fourth and have the city proclaim a Monarch Day sometime in May. Currently, there are no other West Michigan communities that are in this program. We could be a first, and there's no fee. So I'm going to pause here and seek feedback. What we're asking tonight is to certify in the program, not to accomplish the program would be a setup for May, but we do need to enroll the city by the end of the month, if there's interest.
I've got a quick question about that. So I'd like the Monarch Day proclamation, that's pretty simple to do. The invasive species removal, I know that Mitch has led that before, and you've been involved with that, too, so that's something you already do.
Yep.
The native plant sale, you probably are planning on doing that again this year.
May 31st.
But what's the earned recognition for CWH? What is that?
For the community wildlife habitat, but I might ask Mitch to fill in if he says where to go.
Basically, that item says that because we're already enrolled in the Community Wildlife Habitat Program with National Wildlife, that could be one of our three items that we would take credit for underneath the Monarch.
Okay, so it sounds like all four items are very.
Yes.
Considerable.
Yes.
And no fee.
And no fee. So we're hoping to have your support to enroll the community.
Questions from any of the councilmembers about that? Otherwise, Griffin, are we looking for a motion and support in voting on that right now?
Yeah, I mean, if you all would like to move forward with their request, that'd be the most appropriate way to do it.
Is there a motion to enroll the city in the Mayor's Monarch Pledge?
So.
Support.
Motion support. Any other questions, comments?
Just a question, Jason. Is there any requirement that you develop, any kind of like habitat for butterflies or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of, but Mitch, if you.
Not a requirement, but it would be one of the 20 or 25 different options that they provide communities to consider.
Okay. Because we have our Mill Race project that will be happening later this year that is supposed to include some pollinator gardens or some features as part of that.
Great.
So it'd be nice to see that there.
Yeah, we'll take some extra credit.
Any other questions? I guess we've got a motion in support. Marcy, would you call the roll on that, please?
Councilmember Norca.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Gelderlos. Mayorka.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes.
Thank you. Next ask, as we do every year, we're asking for $150 for native seed packets. We give these away at all of our events to promote the team and to spread native wildflowers in our community. Call us here again and ask for approval to spend $150 on seed packets and envelopes and labels.
Is there a motion for that?
So.
Support.
Support. Questions, comments? Sounds like a great program. You've done it in the past, and it's kind of fine. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Maryka.
Yes.
Norca.
Yes.
Mayor Mas.
Yes.
Thank you very much. The final item is an ask that we'd be considering during your budget planning sessions coming up. There are numerous items throughout the year that we seek your approval for, like the seed packets we just went through. Sometimes the timing doesn't work to come and present before you and ask specific items, so we like to ask for budget line item consideration that could be staff-approved. We're not asking for any action tonight. We're asking that you consider that as you head into your budget planning sessions. I'll just share that there are multiple times that our group members reach into their own pockets to provide items for these events. And again, this budget lineup would be intended for community outreach programs.
I've got a question for our finance director. Jane, we already have a line item for this kind of thing, like the tree sale and so on. Is that an issue to make it a separate line item that is specifically for the Environmental Sustainability Committee?
I would not encourage separate line items for everything. I mean, as long as they present as a budget of what they want to spend and it falls within the approved account numbers from the state charter accounts. We have some, we have an amount in supplies for things like seed packets and envelopes and trees and things like that. We also have an amount in other charges and services for things like to hire like animals to come in and be part of an event. Or I think we also approved a request to spend some money with Blanford Nature Center this last week. I mean, as long as the money is in there, I mean, and it doesn't exceed $1,000, those are legitimate expenditures that we can just anticipate and make sure we have a place for.
I just wondered if it would be more simple for them or easier if it was a separate line item?
We only really do that when the funds are spent or being donated because we have to keep track of those. If they're not taxpayer dollars, we want to make sure that donated funds are accounted for in a separate line as well as, I'll give you, for instance, the shop with the cop. They get $6,000 donated. We want to make sure that that's called out in the budget, and so in supplies, there are shop with the cops supplies for Christmas gifts and things like that, so.
JR, you're on the ESC. Any thoughts about that?
Yeah, this committee was born, how many years ago, Jason?
'16.
Pre-COVID, so it's been a while, and we've been operating on a slim-to-no budget, you know, us reaching our own pockets, being creative with our funds. I'm going to make a motion that I think it should be a separate line item. I don't think we've gotten anywhere close to $1,000, but I would like to make sure that's earmarked for the ESC community outreach programs only and doesn't get lost anywhere else. Not to say that it would, but I think that's a great way for us to have those funds available and so our members don't have to dip into their own pockets. I know Jason personally bought a composter for a raffle. That wasn't cheap, but it was a needed item. It was a welcomed item for an event we had, so.
So that sounds like a motion, too.
That's my motion.
Okay. So support for that motion? I'll support that. So motion and support to include $1,000 as a line item in this upcoming year's budget for the Environmental Sustainability Committee? Any other questions, comments?
I'll go back to Jane. What I heard you say, clarify me if I'm wrong, or correct me if I'm wrong. You said that there, under the way you do the budgeting, there is easily $1,000 in there that they can access each year.
So currently, with the anticipation of this request, there is a line item in the community development budget for organization committees, and there is money in that budget line item. It is not specific to the ESC, just like the trees aren't specific to the Tree Board or the Tree Project. There's money in there. It is annotated as such. It just doesn't have their name on it. And my reasoning for this is, then we have a line item for every committee.
Right, and I will say, I appreciate, you know, that we've gone to a budget that's not 100 pages long, and it's been consolidated, and there are things included, different line items, and actually, I appreciate that, as long as they're getting their $1,000. I'm all for that, but I don't know that necessarily it needs to be a separate line item.
So I guess, you know, I appreciate them coming and asking for assistance for their programs. They're obviously well worth, you know, the small amount that we pay for it, and they get a lot of value for the community in that. What would they need to do to be able, I mean, you're saying that there's already funds available for community promotion and development, things like that. What would they need to do to just access that money that's already being budgeted? Like a budget request at the beginning of the fiscal year or as we're doing our budget process?
I mean, that's part of it, because the rules of what they can spend it on still apply to them because it is taxpayer dollars. There are things that we, as a local organization, can't pay for, so we would want to know what it is they were looking to spend in a fiscal year, kind of just a mini-budget that they would submit to us so that we have a heads-up, we know what's in there, we kind of know where it's supposed to go. Are you looking for supplies? Are you looking for other charges and services? How do we account for that? But there is money in the community service budget and has been since I started because of things like the tree requests and the seed packet requests. I want to make sure that we've created some space in our community development cost function to accommodate those requests when they come in. So the last three years that I've been doing the budget, there has been money in there.
So, I mean, I appreciate them coming and asking for modest amounts for different activities, but they've also done a very good job of kind of planning ahead for the whole year and what they're looking at, what they're planning on, and probably have a pretty good idea of what, you know, those costs might be for previous years. So what would it take for them to just discuss at one of their meetings and have it documented in minutes that they've submitted a budget request for, you know, X, Y, Z items for the year?
That would be great, and it doesn't have to be exactly, you know, beat quotes, just a ballpark idea of how they want to spend their funds would be excellent. This gives us a way to plan for that. And again, you know, they don't need to come before you with a request to spend if it's under $1,000. So it doesn't sound like it's going to be, because it sounds like there's several things wrapped up in there. And then what they would do is they would just fill out a check request from the city and provide us with a W-9 for their vendor and a check request and invoice, and we would pay that on their behalf under our EIM.
Okay. I mean, I appreciate you coming here every year, Jason. You're always welcome, obviously, but I kind of do bad that you need to come and ask for $150 for a program that's been going on for a couple of years. It'd be nice if we could just sort of handle that, you know, administratively. Personally, that's my thought. So I kind of agree with Tim, like I would rather not have a separate line item for every committee that's got a request and kind of handle it using the process that Jane described.
The other thing is, we are a tax-exempt organization, and with a state sales tax exempt form, they can purchase things that they don't have to pay sales tax on if we bought it.
So maybe I can provide a little clarity, too. Again, I guess I'm not going to get much into discussion about whether or not they have their own line. What I'm hearing is we'll make it work either way. But I think in the short time I've been here, I can think of kind of three different examples that all seem very similar and yet have their own nuance that require them to be treated a little bit different. So in the case of asking for $150, this is something that the city's been funding for several years now. It's already built into the budget. It's less than $1,000. Theoretically, that wouldn't have had to have been requested tonight. It's fantastic that they do. I think it's a transparent process, but it's in the budget, it's under $1,000. We can just approve it. That is a little bit different than the request for funding support for a first-time event earlier this year to bring in Blanford Nature Center. Yes, it was also $1,000, but that wasn't something that was necessarily included in the budget, that wasn't necessarily contemplated. Again, if what the council wants to do is to let the committee and also us as staff know that we want to give them a little bit more wiggle room when it comes to some of these requests, we can do that, too. And then in that case, something like that doesn't necessarily have to come again in the future. We also have other items, one that we're going to discuss a little bit later in the meeting, not with the ESC, but another volunteer committee that has to do with the community tree sale. That request annually is for above a thousand dollars. So regardless of if it's included in the budget or not, that request still needs to come before the council annually to be approved by charter. So all that to say is, we really want to make sure that these groups that are doing this great community work get the funding that they need. The balance we have to strike is, is it over a thousand dollars or not? And was it something contemplated when the budget was put together? So I think, again, what I've been hearing and what we can work with the ESC on is, I mean, making sure they have up to a thousand dollars of money to do these events, I don't think should be a problem. I think what we want to work on is understanding what we anticipate those thousand dollars to be, even if it's broadly saying a couple hundred dollars of it's going to be supplies, a couple hundred of it may be for a vendor like Blanford Nature Center. That way we know what that is. And when we get those less than a thousand dollar requests, we can approve them administratively and they don't have to come to council. We can save the committee's time. We can save council's time and be more effective and efficient when it comes to running these events. So all that to say, I mean, this item, I'll leave it up to you all if you guys want to designate its own budget line or not. But I know we can work with the committee to make sure that we work through those processes.
It just strikes me that, you know, like JR said, the committee's been around since pre-COVID and it just seems to add more legitimacy if you have your own line item. But that's just my, I'm one of six tonight, so.
Yeah, I mean, spoiler alert, we have a budget set up with what we're potentially allocating our dollars towards. And we don't even come close to reaching a thousand dollars of intended spend. Yeah, I mean, it's just one of those things where, you know, otherwise Jason's going to come here every month and say, you know, can we have seven hundred dollars for this or whatever else? So I stand by my motion and that's fair.
Well, we'll see what happens. That's right. Any other comments or questions about the motion to designate a thousand dollar line item? Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Truist?
Yes.
Vanderwal?
Yes.
Meringue?
No.
Norhuck?
No.
Steenstra?
No.
And Mayor Mouse?
Yes. Sounds like three to three, so money will come anyway.
Good. Appreciate it. Appreciate your time and consideration. Happy to take any questions. I hope the crowd behind me is taking a survey right now.
Well, just one thing. I know, just as a comment, since we do have a lot of residents here tonight, to get your home and yard certified as a wildlife habitat is really pretty easy. I think it's a five dollar charge. Get a cool plaque. Probably most of us can do it with just some peeks.
Yeah.
Putting out a bird feeder or water or something like that. So what's the easiest way for folks to get information about that program?
We have information on the city site. We have information on our Facebook, the NWF website itself. There's a menu checklist of items and we'd be happy to connect with anybody after the meeting today. But, you know, I didn't think I could certify my home and I haven't yet. I took a big step last week and canceled my fertilizer contract. But you don't need a creek in your backyard. You don't need woods. There are some easy to accomplish items. There's a whole range of a couple dozen items and you need a few from each category.
Well, we really appreciate what you and our committee have done, especially, I love the foam or the styrofoam and cardboard.
Keep bringing your stuff?
I have donated a lot of stuff and I think, thank you. That's a great service.
Appreciate it.
Justin?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for the work they have done with volunteer hours. It's a little unacceptable to me that we have members pulling from their own pockets to fund these things. You have certainly all given more than a thousand dollars worth of volunteer time. So I want to also explain why I voted no on that because I do want you to get the thousand dollars, but I just didn't feel totally comfortable with voting on single motions of the budget. I would much rather that we go through the budget process and see how we can incorporate this into that. So I will defer to the finance director and hope that this thousand dollars finds its way in and make sure that that's the case. But based on the feedback that we were given, that's why I didn't support the motion tonight. But I definitely think you all deserve not to be pulling money out of your own pockets, that's all. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for a great presentation too. So time for the public comment. Anybody here would like to address the council? You'll notice that we have a public hearing on the commercial rehabilitation district, which will be taking public comment on that. But if it's another matter you'd like to address the council, just come on up to the podium. Give us your name, address. Tell us what you're thinking about. Carolyn, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I was here about a year ago on the same topic. You didn't exceed my request, so I'm bringing it forward again. Snow plowing the sidewalks for the entire city, not just selected parcels in the city. I have no clue how much it's going to cost, but I can't believe it's that expensive. But using, you know, Councilman Norhuck's, you know, comments on a few other things, you're picking winners and losers. I pay taxes, you pay taxes, you get your sidewalk plowed, I don't. Somehow that's just a little bit of an inequity. And luckily, physically, this year I was able to do my own sidewalks. Last year, as I said to you last year, because my neighbors were kind enough, I was physically unable to do it. They came through and did all of the blowing of the snow and, you know, shoveling the sidewalks. But you've got a lot of members of the community who physically are not able to do it. And if they don't happen to live in the right location, they're responsible for clearing those sidewalks. If they're in the right location, you do it. Somehow there's an inequity there and I would really think that you need to look at it. I don't think it would be that much of an expense.
Thanks, Carolyn. Question for you, Charlie. Before our budget meetings, how much work would that be to find out kind of a ballpark on what that would cost for the city?
I have to look at the mileage. We'll give it back to you on that.
All right, thanks. Anybody else like to address?
Hi, Mike, 336240. First, I'd like to thank the staff for all their work in making this a great community to live in. I'd like to thank each and every one of you for your service. Oh, and the snowplow drivers, appreciate all they did this year. Great job. Special blessings to Justin and Paul on their next chapter of their lives. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks for the kind words, Mike. Appreciate that. Anybody else like to address the council? Okay. Next item is a public hearing on the commercial rehabilitation district. And Griffin, you're going to give us a little bit of background. You talked about it at the last meeting, but does it go a little bit more tonight?
I'm happy to. I know Marcy's going to pull up a couple of slides for me that we used to explain this concept to the DDA back in December. But just a little background in terms of timeline on how we got here. So a little bit of a reminder, this conversation really started kind of at Ernst back in October with the joint meeting between the DDA board and the city council. At that time, there was kind of some informal consensus that this was something, that there was some interest in exploring more. So there was some background given to the DDA in December. And then they took more formal action in January to request that the city council formally establish or recommend that the city council formally establish a commercial rehabilitation district over the existing boundaries of the DDA. So that was brought to you all on February 10th. At that time, the city council voted to set the public hearing for this evening on March 10th. Between that meeting and now, a public notice was sent out in accordance with PA 210. And I am assuming that's what many of the folks in the public are here to talk with us about. But just as a little bit of background, what the Commercial Rehabilitation Act is, so PA 210 of 2025, excuse me, 2005 authorizes the city to approve tax abatements for up to 10 years to promote commercial rehabilitation. So what the Commercial Rehabilitation Act is, is intended to be an economic development tool. It's intended to give local governments the ability to incentivize certain projects within their community. The mechanics of the abatement are, they freeze the taxable value of a property at pre-project levels. So the property would continue to pay the taxes that it paid before this reinvestment. But the project, the investment from the project, new taxes that would be generated from that investment could be abated for a period of up to 10 years. And improvements remain subject to other taxes, such as state education taxes, school operating millages and so on and so forth. So again, this is largely a local tool, which is why the local governing body, in this case, you all as the city council, have so much discretion when it comes to it. So this only applies for qualifying facilities. So qualifying facility is a little bit of a technical term that I like to say is really, there is a level of case to case analysis that has to go in based on the specific property, its history and the statute. But the easiest way to describe it is, it has to be in an established commercial rehabilitation district. It has to be a building or a group of continuous buildings that are at least 15 years or old, classified as commercial property or vacant land that's been used as commercial property within the past 15 years. Rehabilitation requirements. So again, not just any project, any level of investment in a property is necessarily considered rehabilitation. Rehabilitation has a specific definition in the act that can be most kind of concisely defined as new investment resulting from at least 10% of the true cash value at the time. And that can include new construction on that property. It can include renovations, rehabilitation to existing property, expansions, so on and so forth. So again, a little bit of the process for, you know, those listening, those in the audience and for council as a reminder. So the process starts with the development of a district. That's what council's being asked to do tonight. Should you all formally establish a district, all you have done is given the property within that newly established district the opportunity to apply for this incentive. If they apply for the incentive, in this district's case, we would first take it to the DDA, get a recommendation from the DDA, back to the city council, and then you all would have the opportunity at your sole discretion of whether or not to approve the abatement. Theoretically, if you think it's a project that aligns with the master plan, aligns with the goal set out by the city council, or specifically outline why you don't want to. And once it gets that approval from the city council, it then goes to the state tax commission for their more technical review and approval. In some of these, I've done in other communities, once in a while they'll ask some clarifying questions more along the assessing route, evaluation of things. But then in that case, their period would start. So district boundaries, a couple of things for people to think about. A community may establish one or more districts, but there is not the tool in the existing act that allows the amendment of a district boundary. You could theoretically get rid of a district, but there's not really an explicit way to amend a district. So I think that was part of the reason why the DDA mentioned, instead of starting with, let's say, just the Chicago Drive or just the 28th Street, and maybe mangling up and confusing people with multiple districts down the line, the idea was starting with the boundary of the DDA. But you may also have more than one. Theoretically, the city council already has, or not theoretically, technically, the city council already has a commercial rehab district that was established early last year for one of the anchor stores at the mall. A district must be at least three acres in size or located within a downtown or a similar business district area. In the case of the district proposed before you all this evening, it actually meets both of those criteria and have at least one qualified facility. Same thing, this district has multiple. Individual application considerations, we don't need to get into right now. Should this move forward and we start to get applications, I think we can go into this in a little bit more detail. It just reemphasizes some of the things that I mentioned about this is kind of a discretionary approval when it comes to council approving these. And there's also some other things the council can do to protect the community when it comes to quarterback provisions and development agreements and such when it comes to approving these types of incentives. So I'm not going to go through any examples, so I think we're okay. And what I will just end with is, again, this is a tool that can be used to try to proactively create some economic development into priority redevelopment areas in the community. It's my understanding is we've been trying to work towards that for several years and I'm confident that this tool would be another in our tool belt to try to advance those goals. But with that being said, I'm hoping we have members from the public here who have some thoughts to share and I'm happy to do the best I can to answer any questions the council has.
Let's go ahead and open up the public hearing on the establishment, possible establishment of a commercial rehabilitation district. So is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So.
Support? Support? Any discussion? If there's some favor, please say yes. Yes. Any opposition, please say no. Great. Anybody here like to address the council? Talk about, or have questions about the commercial rehabilitation district? Last call? Anybody?
I'm just wondering, what is the, I'm not a property owner in the area, so I'm just wondering, what is the advantage for somebody that don't want to do something like this? I mean, there's a tax abatement, but it's going to cost us to do something, but I'm not sure. It's not really spelled out what is approved to make you an abatement status.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great question. Let me do the best I can to answer it. If I don't answer it, just tell me. So this type of abatement is not going to be to a degree that it's going to help someone who wasn't thinking about doing a project. It's not going to help them in that case. Really, this type of abatement, I like to say is the, it's the push it over the edge type incentive. So if you were thinking about doing a project, but you really just couldn't get your numbers to work, maybe you're just a couple percentage points from being able to make this work out, this type of incentive can help make enough of a difference for taking a project that's not going to be viable right now to potentially viable right now. But for someone who's not thinking about doing a project right now or theoretically, for someone who's already got their financing lined up to do a project, this is just going to be another step for them to go through. So it's really looking for those kind of tweener type projects that can be really significant for a community that wouldn't be able to happen without the use of a tool like this. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that helps.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing? I'm sorry.
I have one question really. Kyle Pryor, 3410 Chicago Drive and 3910 Chicago Drive. But are there any other restrictions that are put on the properties other than the grant that's accessible? Or the tip?
Can you say that one more time? I'm sorry.
Are there any other restrictions that are put on the properties or is it really just an incentive?
I mean, it's an incentive. I can tell you in any community I've ever used it for, the little bit of that give and take that takes place as a community is most often going to make you, you know, enter into an incentive or a development agreement. And in that agreement, they're normally going to put in clauses such as, you know, if I'm, you know, if you're looking to build an office building, we're, you're going to say that I'm going to keep it 70% occupied for the length of this abatement. You know, there's going to be certain types of things in there that, you know, the city's going to ensure that they're getting their end of bargain, if you will. I've seen sometimes they can use it. You know, you're obviously trying to incentivize desirable uses. So this really isn't the type where they're probably going to put use restrictions on it. But I mean, theoretically, they could consider that. So that would more be a negotiation that would take place during the development agreement side, but not that I'm aware of. Otherwise, this is primarily an incentive tool.
Yeah, it sounds like it. That answers it. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Yes, sir.
Scott Heiser, 3420 Chicago Drive. Is there a timeframe for a project to start? Like, does it have to happen in the next year or 10 years?
So there's a couple ways to answer that question. My understanding of the act is to get an abatement, you have to get your, to get this abatement, you have to get it approved within six months of starting construction of the project. I always encourage people, I would suggest you get your abatement in place prior to constructing, starting construction. And the reason for that is, one of the things in the act is that but for argument. You're not able to do the project but for the abatement. And if you've already started it without the abatement, it sometimes makes that argument a little bit harder. Not impossible, but just harder. Theoretically, you would be able to Theoretically, you would be able to apply for this abatement at any point and your up to 10-year clock could start once it's approved by the city council. Actually, coincidentally, right now, we just found that this act's initial sunset is at the end of this year. The legislature is expecting to extend it. So I mean theoretically, you'd be able to apply later, but to give you the most kind of direct answer I can give you, as of today, you would need to apply by the end of this calendar year. So should something, should the council decide to put this in place?
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Support.
Any discussion? Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. So next item on the agenda is a resolution to establish that commercial rehabilitation district. But one, I did just want to make one kind of disclosure, and I talked to Matt about this a little bit today, is that I do own a vacant piece of property on Chicago Drive in the proposed district. I'm not sure, there's no existing building on it, so I'm not sure whether it would really be considered commercial, but anyway, I guess I would like to be allowed to vote on it anyway because I don't think that there's really a direct benefit to me in establishing the district. It's quite different than if I would come in and ask for an abatement. So Matt, anything, any advice you'd like to give me?
Well, looking at this earlier today, I believe that there are several reasons why you don't have a conflict of interest in voting on this proposal today. One of the easiest ways to look at this is that generally they have a conflict of interest. What you're voting on would potentially give you some sort of financial benefit. And right now, I don't believe that's the case. I don't know if there was a commercial building on your property within the last 15 years, but if it's vacant, hasn't been used, it's not a building that is at least 15 years old, it's not a qualified facility, so you aren't even eligible as the property owner to apply for the certificate that would be needed. And there are several other reasons as well, including the fact that you'd have to come to the city council and not to the tax commission. So at that, at a point where you put a building on and it went 15 years, the program is still alive, then maybe if you came to the city council with a request for an abatement, then you might at that point have a conflict.
Thanks, appreciate that.
Chair.
Well, I was a full disclosure, you know, I'd too like to be involved in voting on this property or this, this project, but I do own commercial properties as well in this district. So I would hope that that wouldn't go against what you've just said, Matt, and I don't think it does from what, from what my understanding is.
It doesn't, the first reason I gave for the mayor doesn't apply to you if your property has a building, not if it's 15 years old. But the second reason would still apply, and that is that you're just getting eligibility. There's no definite proposal, there's no definite vote even for your property. When you get to that point, if you ever get to that point, then we need to look at it further before you would be able to participate in a decision on council for a specific application.
Fair, just for transparency. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Chair.
Mayor, you have a couple of questions?
Yes.
So one of the, one of the provisions there, talking about a vacant piece of property or an undeveloped piece of property, which there aren't a lot of those parcels in the DDA that aren't developed in some way. There's a few, but it said it had to be used for some kind of commercial use. What does that mean? Does that mean that that has to be some kind of income generating property, not just a vacant piece of property that somebody owns who doesn't have any development?
So I guess the best way I can answer that is that's the little bit of the case by case that I was referring to before. We have to look at the individual history of that property. I also understand that there can be some various different legal readings of that. What the act says, in my understanding, is it was used for a commercial purpose or adjoining, like, so for example, vacant parking lots that have been used by commercial businesses have used this tool in the past to be redeveloped. But nevertheless, it, it's a challenging question to answer because it can be so fact specific based on that specific property. But there is some discussion in the act itself that I'm happy to sit down with you at some point and look at that talks about vacant parcels and the act actually has its own definition of commercial, commercial purpose.
Okay. Then my second question is, what if there's a property within this proposed district that already has some kind of development agreement in place or a PUD or something like that that hasn't been initiated or hasn't been completed? Would that property be eligible to apply for this if it's already got some kind of agreement that's been put in place?
Again, without knowing the specifics, I mean theoretically, I mean if that development agreement doesn't preclude them from going for incentives, I mean they could apply for that. Theoretically, on a second development agreement, if you're referring to the other part about, you know, putting some other conditions on and so on and so forth.
Right, yeah, I guess I'm just wondering if there's already a development agreement that's been established and then this district is established afterwards. Would there have to be a renegotiated development agreement for them to be able to apply for this incentive? Or would they be able to apply whatever they were agreeing to develop to the act? Like, because they didn't, you know, like they didn't know that that was going to be potentially available when they put that initial agreement in place. There's no conflict there as far as.
Again, I wouldn't anticipate because by creating this district, you're not taking anyone's rights away. All you're doing is conceivably giving property owners an extra opportunity. So I would not anticipate so, but again, maybe we can talk more just so I can, I can understand better.
Okay. I guess I'm just wondering if, if an agreement was already established, would there be an opportunity to revisit that agreement should someone apply for the incentive after the district was created? But maybe there was something that we would have wanted in that agreement or they would have wanted to discuss as part of that agreement, as part of that negotiation. That makes sense.
If I may, Griffin, I think, as Griffin said earlier, the standard is sort of but for for this council to grant the abatement. And if a project's already come to you and you've approved it subject to a development agreement.
Hard to make the argument.
Very hard to make the argument at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Comments or questions?
Yeah, Griffin, I should have teed it up with this, this ask, but how common are commercial rehabilitation districts and how many communities in our surrounding area have done these in the past?
Unfortunately, I guess I can't answer that question particularly specifically. I know that I have, you know, professionally used them in a handful of communities. Again, those were, again, some examples that, you know, I have personal experience with, but to be able to say, you know, how many different places are using them, I couldn't say. I do know that the, that, kind of the policy concept behind the Commercial Rehabilitation Act is very similar to that of the Industrial Facilities Tax Exemption Program. And that's one that I think almost every community I can think, think of has used at some, you know, in some form or another. That was the original one. It was really focused primarily on, again, industrial facilities. I think as the state tends to, they realize that was a program that worked, so they created a kind of a separate, somewhat similar one for commercial properties. And if they haven't already, I've actually heard they're also thinking about potentially doing one for housing, but I don't know enough about that, I guess, at this time to be able to speak to that in a lot of detail either. But I don't know if you have any idea how common this is, I mean.
Well, it's not uncommon, but since you're freezing taxable value property, if the community already has, you know, brownfield authority or industrial, then you're already freezing that taxable value. So it doesn't do you any good to have it frozen a second or a third time.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Justin.
Yeah, I was just going to say, normally when I explain my vote on this, I'm talking to three people, so I thought I would use an opportunity to explain it to more people tonight. And that is that I'm obviously going to vote no on it. I do think once it's established, everyone would be a fool not to apply for it. And as far as I'm concerned, if you apply for it, barring some, you know, extenuating circumstance, I'm going to vote to approve it. But I'm against these concepts as well as industrial facilities exemptions because in my mind, as the planning chair referenced earlier, I don't like where we create situations where we as government pick winners and losers. My responsibility, I think, is to try and keep taxes as low as possible, not say, well, this is an area deserving of different treatment or that is an area of differing treatment. So I'll vote no on it, but I did want to also add that the planning chair's comments did give me pause and some consideration of that philosophy and how it might be applied to the side of us, so thank you for that.
Any other comments? All of this. Yeah, we have a resolution before us, Resolution 3366, Resolution to Establish a Downtown Grandville Commercial Rehabilitation District. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
Support.
Motion and support. Any other discussion? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vandermark?
Yes.
Merrinck?
Yes.
Norck?
No.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Trust?
Yes.
And Merrymus?
Yes. Good, thank you. Next item on the agenda is rezoning a couple pieces of property on 44th Street. Chris, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I have a few, a few items on the agenda to present to you from the planning commission tonight. The first of which is the rezoning of two adjacent properties, 2889 and 2871 44th Street. They're at the corner of 44th and Spartan Industrial Drive. The request that has been recommended positively by the planning commission is to rezone these from the OS Office Service 1 district to the C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. Neighborhood Commercial does expand the available uses allowable on the site. Most notably, it allows retail without a special use permit. It allows restaurants at all, and it allows auto repair and sales and uses similar to that by special use permit. Those are not allowed at all in the current OS 1 district. Because these properties are located on 44th Street, they front that busy roadway, the planning commission felt that those are appropriate land uses that could be added to the potential portfolio for these, for these properties. And perhaps most importantly, the planning commission found that this rezoning is in compliance with the master plans, consistent with the future land use map and with the master plan's zoning plan, which designates both the OS 1 and C1 districts as appropriate for this portion of 44th Street. So being able to use that zoning tool is appropriate under the master plan. So I can take any further questions on this proposal. And I will make it clear that this was a property owner request and it did not originate at the planning commission.
So the one parcel already has an office building on it, urgent care building?
Yes.
And then the other one, and so that, it's already in compliance and will be in compliance?
Yes, the existing uses on the property are consistent with both districts.
Yeah.
But this would allow for a redevelopment with a few, with more opportunity for different uses.
Chair, you're on planning commission, any comments you'd like to make?
No, we've been through this a few times and I think that this makes sense. The planning commission has a great broad overview and sometimes, you know, property owners come to us with specifics that I think make us say, you know what, let's, let's, let's talk about that. And this is that, this is one of those cases.
Anybody have any questions for Chair or Chris? Planning Commission Chair is also here. Now, we have a resolution, let's see, did you remember this last time?
Yes, this is, this is your second.
Is there a motion to remove this matter from the table?
Support.
Support, any discussion? Those in favor, please say yes. Yes.
Yes.
No, please say no. We also have a proposed ordinance number 25-012. It's an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of 2021 to rezone 2871 and 2889 44th Street from the present OS 1 Office Service District to the C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. Is there a motion to adopt that ordinance?
Support.
And support. Any other comments or questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Merrinck?
Yes.
Norck?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Trust?
Yes.
Vandermark?
Yes.
And Merrymus?
Yes. Great.
Second item I have up for you tonight, this one did originate at the planning commission, though there are, there's at least one and potentially more developments in the pipeline that are very interested in the outcome of this vote. And this is a proposal to rezone some properties around the, in and around the downtown from CBD Central Business District to DE Downtown Edge. The properties in question are primarily south of Chicago Drive, most of them front Maple Street. This property we're standing in is actually one of them. The purpose of this proposed rezoning is to accommodate two, the two major differences between CBD and DE. And that is that in the Central Business District, under the Form Based Code, all new construction buildings must have a retail storefront. And that requirement makes sense on Chicago Drive where we have basically our main street and we want to have a consistent retail frontage and consistent businesses for people to walk from one to the next to the next. When you talk about the side streets and you go one block south to Maple, that requirement makes a lot less sense because commercial storefronts, retail storefronts in that area are not going to survive. And that has, that has been brought to our attention by potential developers and property owners. The other difference is that the Central Business District does have the option to go pretty tall, up to six stories by planning commission approval. And as we go down onto Maple Street again and other side streets, there's single family homes in those areas and building that tall probably isn't appropriate. Now, the planning commission's discretion would protect against that to some extent, but there was thought on the planning commission that there really isn't a reason even to open that door on those streets. Other than that, the two districts are very similar. They are mixed-use districts. They allow for office, retail, residential, et cetera, the types of uses we want in our downtown. And they allow for a mix of those uses within buildings. The biggest difference, however, though, is that in a DE district, you are permitted to do a fully residential building with residential on all floors. And given our market realities right now, where our demand for residential is so much higher than our demand for commercial space, it's something that is market responsive and that's why the planning commission has recommended this to you tonight. I do have one other note on this proposal. The planning commission also considered including the block bounded by Wilson, White, Franklin and the railroad tracks, which is the shopping center, which has the Bluefin and the Chamber of Commerce and the post office, among other businesses. In this rezoning tonight, they opted not to. That property will remain zoned NW, which is North Wilson, which is a different Form Based Code district, so that, that property will be unchanged.
And that had a lot to do with some of the discussion we had when these were introduced a couple of weeks ago, thinking just a lot about the difference between truly fronting kind of that main block of Wilson, Chicago Drive, as opposed to as you start to get a little bit further away on Wilson, Maple, Fayette and some of these other kind of offset streets that serve a little more as a buffer to some of our residential areas.
This was introduced last time, so is there a motion to remove this proposed ordinance 25-013 from the table?
Support.
Motion, support, any discussion? Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. And we also, now we have proposed ordinance number 25-013, the ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of 2021 to rezone property from the present CBD Central Business District to DE Downtown Edge District. Is there a motion to that effect?
Support.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any other final comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vandermark?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Trust?
Yes.
Vandermark?
Yes.
Merrinck?
Yes.
And Merrymus?
Yes. Chris?
All right, one more planning commission item. Yes, the, the next recommended amendment, this is a text amendment to Article 8 of the zoning ordinance, specifically to the C4 zoning district. Now, that is the zoning district that was created in 1990s to accommodate River Town Crossings Mall. And frankly, basically zones everything within it for a 1990s mall with very little flexibility. These amendments would be intended primarily to allow the construction of more outlot businesses in and around the mall campus, particularly to give the opportunity to use some of the excess parking for new development, mostly primarily commercial development. The potential, though it's not, has not been specific The potential, though it's not, has not been specifically applied for yet, but the potential first application of these amendments would be on some of the land freed up by eliminating the parking deck. And then additional land could potentially be used under that. Right now, there are impediments in this zoning district to using that land and others because of required separation distances between outlots, limitations on the types of streets that outlots confront, and other things of that nature that, again, were designed 35 years ago, so that this mall would be built exactly as it was built. As the mall is repositioned for its future, more flexibility is needed, and that's why you have this amendment recommended by the Planning Commission tonight.
Well, I appreciate the work on this, because I think all of us, none of us are going to be sad to see the parking deck removed, and whatever we can do to, you know, enhance the value of that property and revitalize it and make it super viable for the long term, I think. Yeah, so thank you, Planning Commission, for working on that. Jared, any want to add, or Carolyn?
Nope.
Okay. So that was introduced at the last meeting, so is there a motion to remove from the table proposed ordinance number 25-014?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any questions, comments? No? All of those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
And the opposition, please say no. Okay, great. Now we have proposed ordinance number 25-14, an ordinance to amend certain portions of Article 8 of the zoning ordinance. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Motion and support. Marcy, did you get, you made the motion? It's kind of simultaneous there, so. All right, any final questions, comments? Now, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra?
Yes.
Trust?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Merringah?
Yes.
Norhuk?
Yes.
And Merrimas?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council.
Thanks, appreciate it. Next item is the consent agenda. A few things on there tonight. We have the report, EMS fire and police report from February, police report, I thought was very interesting, especially about the swatting call from the Netherlands. That was kind of interesting, kind of a random thing to have happen, but anyway, interesting. Always enjoy reading those reports. We also have the minutes from the Park and Recreation Board from the January meeting and February meeting of the Downtown Development Authority, Historical Commission, and Library Board. Also, we have application for the 2025 Fourth of July fireworks display. Chief, anything you'd like to?
No, that's just the exercise we have to do every year, the issue of permission to amend the, and make them up the shooter show.
Okay. This is maybe a dumb question, and it's probably been answered before, but did we contract for the next two years, though, for the actual purchase of that fireworks, because it's the 250th anniversary?
Yeah, you're under contract with the vendor through the 20th.
Okay, so this is, the permit has nothing to do with that?
No, this happens every year regardless.
Yeah, and to clarify how it worked, I guess Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but you did a two-year contract for '24 and '25, and then earlier this year, we brought you a contract for '26. The idea of that one was to get ahead with it. '26 is going to be a Saturday, and it's the, oh, I'm not even going to try to say whatever centennial it's going to be.
250.
Yeah, 250, and whatever the fancy name is, but so yes, technically, you're under contract through 2026, but this is year two of a two-year contract.
So we've got that request for the firework permit. And also, we also have a proposed proclamation for National Arbor Day, which is on February 25, and we've signed this, I think, the, maybe the eighth, not the year. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any other questions, comments? No? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Trust?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Merringah?
Yes.
Norhuk?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
And Merrimas?
Yes. Great. Griffin, City Manager's Report.
Awesome, thank you. Well, I am going to start with a little bit of background regarding the community tree sale. So at our last meeting on February 24th, Kyla Boss, who's in the audience, and I may have come up and answered any questions you all may have, but she works really hard, as we all know, on a number of things regarding trees in our community, but one of the things she works really hard on is the community trees project and the annual tree sale. So she made a public comment at our last meeting to try to draw attention to this sale, which actually began on March 1. A copy of the flyers included in all of your packets. And notably, she thanked the City Council for agreeing to contribute $5,000 to the event. And that caused a little bit of confusion, so I want to take responsibility for that and try to clarify what I think happened and just try to kind of set us on the right direction moving forward. So upon review, while there absolutely was funding included in the budget for the community tree sale, it was not $5,000 specifically for the tree sale. There was likely confusion because there was $5,000 included in the line item that the tree sale is charged to, but there are also other things charged to this line item, including some of the things we talked about with the ESC earlier, the native tree seed packets, so on and so forth. So again, I apologize, I think there was some confusion there, but in 2023, the Council did approve $5,000 for the tree sale, but the sales did not exceed 2,500, the match that we provided. As a result, that's the amount that has been used in our budgeting process for the last couple years. And nevertheless, because it's a request for over $1,000, a formal request really should be brought to you all and approved, even though this is something we do every year, this is something that I'm very confident there is support for, but to help avoid these types of misunderstandings, that's, I think, part of the reason why these requests for over $1,000, you know, come formally. So with all that being said, I know Kyla is here to kind of make that formal request, and I just, I want to clarify for you all that there is absolutely that $2,500 available to support this event. You know, if there is interest in looking for it to go up, I think the budget could accommodate, you know, a slightly higher amount, unfortunately, probably not up to the 5,000 this year, but we would ultimately kind of be looking for it not to exceed recommendation with the idea that we at least know at one time in the past that, you know, the approval amount was not actually reached, and because it's a matching fund, it at least gives them the opportunity to move forward and try to get as much participation as they can. So with all that being said, again, I apologize for the confusion. Kyla, did you have anything you wanted to add in regard to this?
First of all, I would like to say that I apologize, because I was as confused as anyone, and I want to thank Rainy Gelder, Lewis, Jane, and Griffin, and Charlie for explaining the process to me. So I realized that we should come to you, like, in February and ask for it to be put to, for the tree sale that year, but at this time, we should be asking for you to include it in the budget, so that we have it for the '25, '26 year, so that next spring that we don't have the same confusion. And it was really nice for everyone to be so patient and kind with me and explain the process, and I apologize for the confusion myself. Another thing that I would kind of like to clarify is a previous city manager, Ken, actually brought this program to me and said, how could we make this work in Granville? Well, some cities, like Frederick, Maryland, we actually spoke to the Arborist, she's on staff, and she runs the sale, so she tracks everything, and she handles the whole thing. Well, trying to avoid putting that all on the finance department, the city tree sale is actually run with the city tree board. That's, that's this sale. It's not a Granville Community Tree Project. What Granville Community Tree Project does is steps up and serves Granville by running a store, because this would be a nightmare if Jane had to track every one of these trees and know the availability, and know the cost, and know what each person should pay for it. And so as the project, we are a nonprofit, and we serve the city of Granville to facilitate the sale. We do not make any money off of it, nor can we, and the city does not pay us any money for the trees, because they pay the nursery and subsidize the sale so that residents can plant trees on their own property. And it's, it's kind of tough, because both Charlie and I are on the tree project and the tree board, and so quite often, it's confused, which board's doing it, or is it the city board, or is it actually the nonprofit? And a lot of times, we work together so that we can make more things happen, and one of the things, I, I just kind of scanned back through some of the grants and some of the projects the city tree board had done, and three of them totaled up to $45,000. And in grant money, because we can match that, and we match it with, like, maybe labor or volunteer hours or equipment use, we actually brought $23,400 into the city so that it didn't come out of taxpayers' money. And, you know, that's something that we're very proud of, that we can do that, and I appreciate you considering this, since I didn't follow the process and we didn't get approved for what I thought we had. And right now, currently with 10 days of the sale, Griffin encouraged me to go ahead and put the sale up and let it get started, and to bring it to council tonight. We've currently sold 36 trees with the city fund of 1,273,08. So that's 10 days into the sale. If it stayed at that momentum going through, just say that we sold exactly that amount of trees for the other 20 days, it would total out to 3,819,24. So right now, 2,500 will get us, and I'm asking, should I shut the sale down as soon as we hit the 2,500 for the city match? Because that's what I'm asking for tonight. Should I come back on the 17th and tell you where I'm at?
That would be a good problem, if you go beyond the, I think Griffin in his memo has suggested possibly up to 3,000 in the amount not to exceed.
I think we have 2,500, right? Is, that's what everybody's telling me.
There's 2,500 included in the budget. We went back, that was planned for contributing to this project.
Okay.
That's, that's the amount that has been budgeted the last couple of years.
That makes sense.
I did ask Jane in the finance department to go ahead and look at how we were tracking in that budget line that has a total of $5,000, and where we were tracking with some of the other things that we charged in it. And we were comfortable that if the council did want to increase the contribution to this event this year or into the future, that this year, that budget line could accommodate up to 3,000 for this event. So I, I mean, I guess the best answer, Kyla, I have to your question right now is, I mean, depending on what the city council is wanting to contribute to your event, if that's the funding that you have for the match, I mean, once that's hit, that's what the city has available to contribute.
And that's what.
We need to look for, you know, outside sources, outside donations, I mean, between now and when you hit there, if you want to keep it going, I mean, maybe that's something we can talk more about, but in terms of, you know, the city's funding available, I mean, I think that's what the council's going to determine tonight, is what's the maximum they're able to contribute this year.
And Kyla, we can, you and I can stay in touch if, like Griffin said, if you go beyond, which will be a great problem, we can talk about donations or some, some other sorts of.
I honestly feel like if we hit the 3,000, if, if the city council feels that that's what we should be able to use for a match, then if we hit that 3,000, it might be a great thing to stop the sale and then go, because this is a city subsidized sale, it's not through funding and donations, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, but the city is actually the, the person that sponsors the sale. So I would, I would like to stop the sale when we hit the limit of what you feel is feasible. And I, I really appreciate your consideration in this, so that you let me go ahead and start the sale, and, you know, there's a lot of excitement, a lot of people asking questions, and people are getting pretty rubbed up about it, and it's a great program, and I'm glad Ken brought it to me, but it wasn't feasible to make the finance department run a Shopify store and keep track of trees. And so that was one way that the tree project, the nonprofit, could actually serve Granville.
Well, it sounds like you guys are off to a great start.
Thank you.
So, Council, is there a motion to approve up to, not, an amount not to exceed $3,000 for this year's, three seconds?
So moved.
Support and support. Other discussion? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Could I real quick there?
Yeah.
Sorry. I was just going to say, I really appreciate the work put into this. I also am very thankful for, I see the advertising there, as well as on here, that it is reserved for property owners in the city of Granville, because like you said, it is subsidized by the city and by the city's taxpayers. So seeing that that is kind of the process, and that's advertised to people as they hear that, that's why I'm working so.
Thank you. I, each address that comes in, I verify that it's in the city. I've even had to text Steven, say, hey, this is close, where are we at here? So I try very hard. It doesn't mean that I police every tree, and I, I hope that I reworded several things to say that you agreed to plant this on your property.
Kyla, what's the date, just for anybody who's listening or here tonight, what's the date for the pickup on the trees?
It's the 19th, April 19th, and that is a week before Arbor Day, so it'll be the Saturday before Arbor Day. We have tree planting classes on April 17th in the evening from 6:00 to 8:00, and April 12th from 10:00 to 12:00 at the library, so that people can learn how to plant their trees. And I've had a couple people get ahold of me that can't plant it, and said, is there anybody that would help me? And of course, we have volunteers.
Great, thanks for all your, how are you?
All right, thank you, thank you very much. Are we good?
Let's see, did we roll? Oh, okay. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Merringah?
Yes.
Norhuk?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Trust?
Yes.
And Merrimas?
Yes.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Kyla.
The next item I have for you all this evening is a, is a less exciting one, unfortunately, and also a much more expensive one, but there's a memo in the packet that provides an update regarding the fire engine that was damaged on February 12. I know many people of our, on our team have been going back and forth with our insurance carrier and the manufacturer of that fire engine, and to date, there is a strong, confident feeling that the engine can be repaired. So what we are seeking this evening is the authorization of a purchase order, which would allow the manufacturer to move forward with the necessary repairs. At this time, the initial estimate that we have says it will cost $365,148, but it's also understood that additional damage will likely be found once the truck is disassembled. All costs are expected to be reimbursed by our insurance carrier, and I know to date, we've received a check for $250,000 from the insurance carrier to get this process started. So Chief May's here, he's been leading this effort up if there's any other questions, but again, at this time, what we're looking for is just authorization of the PO in the packet, so we can get started on the necessary repairs.
Questions for Griffin on this chair?
Unpopular question, do we have to accept that this is repairable?
You don't have to, but at that point, your option is buying a new fire truck on your own dime.
Okay.
I'm really confident, JR, that I had a team of people come up to represent us, because auto body is not my thing.
Yeah.
And these are experts that I've had relationships with and trust for years, and they're all super confident it can be done.
That's great. I mean, it's better than waiting for a new truck. What does this, these repairs do to our warranty on that vehicle?
The part of the truck that's basically going to be rebuilt, which is everything from the cab back, is going to be brand new. That will leave the factory with a new one-year warranty. The parts of the truck they don't have to touch, which are small in number, they're going to extend. going to extend the existing warranty, the six months that we lost because the truck will be out of service. So we're all in that regard.
Good.
Josh? I was just going to ask, you know, equipment and stuff that's onboard the truck and everything, that's all included and?
If that's included, we're still having some of that evaluated. I mean, there was somebody in this morning looking at things, and there's some costs that are going to be incurred in that department, but are still part of the plan.
Okay. And we're also in an app, a no-fault insurance state or whatever, but is the at-fault party insurance contributing something to this, or is it just solely our insurance carrier that's?
All I can tell, I don't understand that, to be honest with you. I can tell you that the at-fault party's insurance company has been in contact with our insurance company.
They work that way.
Seeking to settle, and the answer was a hard no, because it's going to be months until we even have any idea what these type of damages.
My understanding at, at this time, and I can only speak really highly of our insurance carrier, they've been really great, you know, to work with, and my understanding is at this point in time, their focus is on trying to make sure we are getting started on getting our equipment back to where it needs to be while they're working through on their end what this is going to look like with the at-fault party. So I think it'll be probably some level of time before we know, you know, whose dollars are paying for what, but at this time, I know our insurance carrier is trying to make sure, you know, we have what we need. I do want to clarify, just maybe, maybe it is for myself, so I apologize, but just the, the initial estimate that we have, the cost of the $365,000, that's the repairs, the repairs to the fire truck itself. There are other parts of this claim that'll make that total number much higher, including the equipment that Chief May mentioned, cleanup from the diesel fuel that had to take place that night, and so on and so forth. So, you know, the other piece I just want us to be cognizant of is, yes, we're, we're very fortunate to have an insurance company that has been pleasant to work with in this, but in addition to our almost million-dollar claim for the lightning strike last year, this is going to be another claim, probably getting close to half a million dollars or more. So again, unfortunately, we've had kind of a bad stretch of a few of these, but, you know, our, our insurance provider to date's been holding up their end of the bargain.
They've been outstanding.
Just real quick, Chief, Reader's Digest version, in the interim while we're waiting for this, how does that affect provision of services, and what's the plan for, you know, continuing at the high level that we do with that?
Right now, our reasonable apparatus is in place of the, of the damage one, so we're okay. If one more thing were to happen, our vendor has expressed a willingness to try to locate a loaner for us. In fact, they're kind of working that out in the background right now, but we're one of three other customers in the West Michigan area that caused apparatus that way to splinter, so that's where we're at right now. We're good. If something else were to go down long-term, we'd have to make some other arrangements.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve entering into a purchase order with halt fire in the amount of $365,148 in the best interest of the city?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any other comments, questions? No? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Maryka?
Yes.
Northrup?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Trust?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
And Merritts.
Yes. Thank you, Chief. Before we look for a motion to go into closed session, I've got two other quick updates for this group. One is in regard to the Mill Race Park project that has been kind of floating out there for some time. So unfortunately, we received an update last week from our consultant, who's been helping us with that project, that Eagle has put up another roadblock for us. So there is another adjustment to the plans that they are looking for. This is a little bit frustrating for our team, because this is probably the third or the fourth time that we've made adjustments based on their feedback, resubmitted plans, and then are getting another comment back. So we have a meeting this week to try to work that through with them. We've also started to reach out to some contacts that our team has at the state level to try to figure out, is this going to be the final, final thing, or what's going on from Eagle's perspective of why I think we feel like the goal line keeps getting changed? So with all that being said, I just want to reassure you all that, you know, getting this Mill Race Park project done this year in 2025 is a priority for us. I think several months ago, I had shared that, you know, we were, you know, kind of cautiously optimistic we would be able to start that project this spring. Unfortunately, with this news, that's looking less and less likely. Nevertheless, I just, I want you all to be updated on kind of that most recent news we got, and I know, again, we have a meeting later this week that we're hoping to get a little bit more clarity on where that needs to go, so stay tuned there, or if you'd like to discuss more at some point, please let me know, but we're going to do the best weekend to, to kind of make sure that still happens this year. We've just got a few more hurdles apparently we've got to try to get over. Other than that, just a couple reminders, next week is going to be a busy meeting for, I know many of us in this room, budget work session number one is on Monday, March 17th. Our team is working hard to get materials finalized for you all that will be distributed by the end of the week, so you'll hopefully have at least a few days before the meeting. We also have the MML's Capital Conference next week that I think a couple of you are going to, and lastly, the Little League Community Stakeholder Meeting that we've talked about at a few meetings this year. The initial meeting has been scheduled for March 20th. We did send a mailer out to all property owners within 200 feet of the property to try to give them an opportunity to attend. I have been hearing from some of those neighbors, so I'll tell you with confidence, people have received our letter, and with that, you all are obviously welcome to attend, but that will be the, the initial meeting on March 20th. Those are all the comments I have, otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Griffin? Hold on a minute, Karen. Okay, so before we go turn into your closing to discuss pending litigation, let's go around and council member comments, Jared?
Yeah, as always, thanks obviously to Jason and the ESC that I'm proudly representing for the annual report since every year. I would appreciate if more boards did these annual reports, and that's kind of why I pushed for a separate line, line item on the budget, because we do work so hard, and I would say to label us as active would be a massive understatement. There's lots of things on those slides that we are doing actively, and I'm proud of that. So thank you, Jason, for presenting. I hope you guys enjoyed that. Otherwise, that's it for me today. Thanks, I have nothing more to add.
You have nothing more to add? Nothing. Josh? Wow. Well, I've got a couple of things tonight. I had, had fun, I think it was a week before last, got to go to a couple of events on the same day, we could go Friday, I believe. One was the RoboDoc Robotics, RoboDoc State Championship, which was a lot of fun. I mean, there was a lot of energy in that room, and just what a fantastic facility the schools have provided, a great, great, great program. The other thing, earlier in the day was, it's, I think the event's called Amazing Shake, and middle school and high schoolers do like debate and so on, so we judged that, and that was a lot of fun. Also, just wanted to announce that we've been recertified as a Tree City USA again, and also received the Growth Award, so that's a good thing, which we have. So a lot of good things, and a lot of people doing a lot of work on behalf of the cities and so on. So there's been a request to adjourn into closed session to discuss pending litigation, commercial tax appeals, in particular, EPC Swift Leisure RIDEA Landlord LLC, that's for property at 393944 Street, and also, second one is Loax Theaters Incorporated for the property at 3728 Riverton Parkway. So is there a motion to go into closed session to discuss those matters?
So moved.
Support.
Motion to support. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Northrup?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Trust?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Maryka?
Yes.
And Merritts.
Yes. Okay, well, thank you, everybody, for showing up tonight.